Commissioner Mazer?
Here.
Commissioner Morales? Chair Ray?
Pleasant.
Commissioner Strauss?
Here.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Proctor Gessler? Ebbler?
I said.
Here.
Thanks for the call.
Good to have you up here.
I'm on some public comments. But if members of the public want to make public comments, they have three minutes. You have lots of public, so you can see everybody, especially just me. All right, you know? We'll go along to, I remember twenty twenty-four and eight, eight, eight. This one's going by budget presentation. Mayor should have.
All right. Absolutely, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Commissioner, and so today we wanted to present very briefly just some information on the twenty twenty-five budget. Also in your packet is included was a overview of the twenty twenty-five new funding requests, the twenty twenty-three audit, and then you also have a consideration of a housing program that we will talk about today, too. So that should all be in your packet, and we'll kind of run through this, and then obviously, please stop me if you have any questions, and otherwise we'll keep moving. So today's agenda includes information, kind of reflecting on our past, assessing our current needs, and then also planning for the future. So we'll kind of kick off here. So looking at some of our, kind of go over, provide a brief overview of our village and villages that we have, some current contacts, outlook for twenty twenty-five, a kind of an environmental scan, and then we'll kind of go into the departmental requests if anyone has any questions on those. So Village One-O-One, as you know, we have the law enforcement village, so that supplies some funding for the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney, the Sheriff's Office, the courts, and animal services. And so that is kind of how that runs. And also, we also have the juvenile home debt, so there's some village out there for that. We have our housing village, as you are aware, so that, you know, really helps us attain our horrible housing needs that we need in the county workforce housing, horrible housing. And then you are very familiar with that, obviously. We have the senior village, as you're aware, which is up for renewal, the nine-on-one village, which helps KC CDA operations, and then the veterans.
Is your law enforcement going in line with the senior village for renewal this year?
No, it is not. So I believe that was up when I started in twenty twenty-two, so it's on a different cycle.
It's been a six-year cycle. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be four years.
Yeah. Oh, no, no, that's, I believe that is correct.
Because I know the senior village is coming up real quick.
Yeah.
And I thought, geez, I want the veterans who are there, and I'm just in the way of...
Yeah.
Now, home debt, there's, should be about paid or...
I ended up looking up, but I know, I believe we have like four years, maybe? It's, we have some time. You're the vice chair?
It's, we're paying at a three-and-a-half percent interest rate, which is a really low rate, and I think we've got, it was, I think we've got about eight to ten years, but there's no reason to pay it off because our interest rate is so low. It's mainly more than that right now.
Right, I agree, yeah, no, absolutely. I agree, yeah. So we want to hit home on the, and touch on the smart growth, so obviously, as you know, we want to kind of highlight and reflect on our past decisions, particularly the imbalance in between, or between, I'd say, the internal, external departments due to cuts in services over the years. And so obviously, last year, the board invested in a lot of great priorities that helped restore a lot of staff, and so there's still some room for improvement there. And then finance, this year has proposed some changes to stabilize central service costs, aiming for better alignment and service delivery. So we've been trying to hit home on smart growth and progress a lot of those initiatives for some of this forward. So we wanted to share a few slides on things that, from the Office of the Administrator's perspective, on our conversations with various departments, elected offices over my years here, and just kind of looking at sort of, you know, what's going on in the environment. So right now, as you know, our buildings and grounds department deliver a lot of the social maintenance and just overall infrastructure projects for all county departments, facilities, and fleet. So we see staff capacity being an issue, including fleet condition. As you know, we invested in enterprise fleet program, and that's been working, you know, doing wonders on our county fleet, so we're happy about that. And then sourcing vehicles remain a challenge due to the big three company delays. So as you know, for example, like our pool car, motor pool car program, you're supposed to have three vehicles, we only have two right now because one of the vehicles is just, is still in production. So that's, you know, sort of having an impact on our fleet. Finance has done a lot of work to rework for efficiency and sustainability of the department. They've also been working to optimize our illustrious ERP programs on MUNIS. So we've had some really good strides in that, in our ability to hire consultants. So the leader is GG, but I believe they're called GT Consulting. So they have, it actually affords us access to a team of individuals that have worked for Tyler Technologies in the past, so we're able to leverage an entire team to resolve a lot of the issues that we inherited when we got on board. So that's, that's been a really good thing, but trying to look at leveraging more opportunities and modules than that program related to contract spenders and things like that. So given resources, obviously, the position eliminations have affected wellness. We kind of talked about that through the non-medical benefit survey, a presentation that we gave, and, you know, some of the commissioners asked, well, how come folks aren't taking time off of us because a lot of staff were actually cut? So employees just have this sense that they can't take off because they're kind of dumping a workload onto a already strained department. Onboarding and recruitment's a big deal, and those remain issues, so there's been some efforts in the works to automate a lot of that and make that operation more efficient. So that way, when folks are onboarded, they feel welcome to the county, and they feel they're part of something. And then they're also working to optimize the ERP system. As you know, it's not just the finance system, it's also an HR management system as well. So there's modules in there that we can take advantage of. IT has, you know, overarching goal, obviously, to fortify and maintain security posture. We've seen, and everyone knows that our security posture is tight around here, so it's definitely secure, and it is a good thing that it is. So, you know, they take pride in that, so they continue that effort. However, they've noticed that we have a lot of applications for all, so many departments may utilize systems that are similar to one another, but departments and IT weren't necessarily in the same room when systems were procured, so they're trying to consolidate systems to create efficiencies so that we don't have so many systems that the applications team is trying to keep track of. And then also, we're looking at where we can develop solutions where individuals and employees in departments can understand where IT are on certain projects and timeline and things like that.
We suffered a cross strike.
So very middle, most of our systems, I would say ninety-five percent of our systems were fine. There were some issues within particular departments, but nothing that was widespread at all. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Absolutely. So obviously, so kind of looking on the external departments, so opioid settlement funds, you know, that's going to be something that's huge coming here, obviously, this, later this year and into twenty twenty-five. Animal services and enforcement, another staffing and software kind of issue that we're having there, so they're, you know, obviously trying to enhance staff so the human capital's good, and then also the software behind it through licensing and, you know, that sort of effort to ensure that we have programs, searches, forms that are, you know, elevating our safety and data reporting communications. So we obviously have this huge effort to ensure that we're engaging the community and keeping the community informed as well as board commissioners. So there's a lot of improvements that are taking place, obviously, the new website is being worked on now, and so we hope to have that live next year, and then also elevating and enhancing our social media platforms. Health and Community Services, a lot is going on there. We believe that what's on the horizon is a need for a new household hazardous waste facility, so that's on their radar. If anyone's ever been in the current household hazardous waste facility, you will know that it's, it's not what it should be for counties, county. Housing, we have an implementation of the new housing plan and technology support, quality assurance, and compliance of contracts. That's a huge thing that Director Ball, her team, has ensured that we have sound contracts in place to mitigate any sort of conflict. Parks and Expo, they're implementing their new five-year master plan, and so they're looking at how recreation and the Expo Center tie into that and to enhance those services, continuity of programs and maintenance facilities. Our planning department on the horizon, they have a lot of investment in aerial mapping needs, the GIS tools, municipal support with plan development, and obviously, the materials management planning, that's going to be huge coming up in twenty twenty-five. And we're on track with that. Director Grover and her team are doing a straight job on that, as well as we're appointing solid, or the Materials Management Planning Committee members. And then MSU Extension, investment in program and coordination of youth fair in the ongoing staff export that they need as well. We also took a look at county-wide elected offices and in the court system. So as you know, with, so for example, the clerk and registry, the Dean's Office are continuing to leverage as much technology as possible to enhance efficiency and communication to the public and internally, and then also increasing staff capacity. As you know, the elections, the new statutory requirements around elections have been huge, and so staff capacity is of worth those efforts are needed. Of course, obviously, as you know, we're going to have very huge, or I say significant needs for capital investment to support the two new, or the new judge that is coming onboard, and then also looking at hiring their staff and then also enhancing security for their buildings. So we have a budget to support sort of these unfunded, I would say, expansions of property that we do renovations to projects, and then also supporting unfunded mandates from the state. Councils, County Sheriff, so they have a lot that's going on there. Obviously, they have records management systems that are not working properly how they like, so there's investment needing in that, but also jail modernization. So if you've ever taken a tour of the jail, you know that we have an older part and a newer part, so it needs to be modernized to ensure that we aren't, we don't have the ACLU on us at a certain point. So a lot of plumbing issues in the old part of the jail that we're trying to modernize today. So that's on the horizon, something that the county board will be involved in. Office of Prosecuting Attorney, we know that there's a constant need as caseloads continue to rise, there's a, there's a need for increased staff, so important capacity there. So and then obviously, the facilities that go along with that. Director, continuing to focus on mediating MUNIS issues and modernizing their office to make it more efficient, so leveraging that technology. And then lastly, the train commissioner focusing on, really, I would say, compliance with, again, unfunded state mandates you'll see on your August seventh agenda, supporting a position for MS four compliance, I would say, MS four compliance position to comply with stormwater management issues, environmental issues that they have to deal with that's coming down from the department. So now we want to just get into kind of the current state of the county, so, you know, again, oh, yes, please.
Just have a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
Can you give examples of what some of the unfunded mandates, creating pressures on the courts, and then um, staff capacity in the prosecutor's office? Is violent crime or crimes locally moving against the national train because it's in crimes down? And I'm wondering, are, are caseloads growing locally or what's going on?
So, so I'll answer the, kind of, the course question first. On that, I would need to get back to you on the unfunded. So there have been, you know, through MAC, there have been efforts that have, since I would say failed, but they have, there are a lot of changes that come through legislation that, you know, don't make it through me, or specify through me, and they get struck down. But the most recent one had to do with court fees, how they collect those. That was since struck down. However, on the horizon, they are looking at possible changes to legislation on how they actually collect, you know, court fees. So that's, that's an example of that. I would say on the prosecutors, the caseloads, so the impetus of requesting a new judge for Council County and Alachia County, so, you know, Senator Sean McKean supported that legislation, that was based on the fact that caseloads are increasing, that our court system can't, you know, the judges can't process the docket as efficiently as possible. So I believe that the cases are on the rise. I see the prosecutor bending not into that fact, but I don't have the first, but that was sort of the impetus of increasing the judgeship so that they can process more through the docket.
For some time, I mean, we've had that backlog.
Yeah.
The prosecutor didn't have enough staff to help get those into the court, just the way there's justice that's served, so. Need to support the prosecutor, help him out. This last time around, a couple of positions, but I think you're going to ask him, he's sitting right here, so.
Absolutely. Same way.
I've got a question I might want to ask, and it has to do with the new funding that came, I think there were seven counties that were, I got a few of those, Jeff, or that, but it's a substantial amount of money that's going to be invited. But how many years is that? And that's not, that doesn't have the longevity of a permanent type of issues, do they? I think, what's county's take on that? What, I guess, what is going to be used, dollars? Congratulations, by the way, that was a lot.
So in twenty twenty-four, the state provided, allocated money to six county prosecutors' offices across the state. Wayne County got five million, Genesee County got three million. Four counties, Meskegan, Ingham, Saginaw, and Kalamazoo, each received one million dollars from the state. The process of setting up the distribution of that money for the twenty-four budget year of the state is taking the total actually this week. The money is scheduled to drop, the first half of that million dollars is scheduled to drop in Kalamazoo this week. Because of the delays in that distribution, that allocation, we will be allowed to use the money for our fiscal year, the remainder of fiscal year twenty-four, and then this year twenty-five. In the meantime, the state has completed its twenty twenty-five budget. That twelve million dollar allocation that the state made for the six offices I previously listed has been increased from twelve million dollars to seventeen million dollars in the state's twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget. But it won't be split between just the six of our counties, it will be split between fifteen towns. What that distribution is going to look like, I don't know yet. But again, I suspect, and again, this is not me committing the state to anything, but I am hopeful that the state will look at that distribution, now that we've ironed out process with the state for the initial twenty twenty-four, first time ever having done things. I expect that the process of the distribution for twenty-five will be smoother, quicker, but I'm hopeful that we will be able then to roll some of that twenty-five money into twenty-six. It is not ongoing funding yet at this point with the state. We've got money now twice, two consecutive years, increase the amount, believe that we, the Prosecutor's Association, believe that we have support at the state level for, again, increasing those allocations, spreading it to more counties around the state, and continuing this, but I can't promise that. What I can say is, we have money from the state for the twenty twenty-four fiscal year, and we'll be allowed to use it in twenty twenty-five. We have money from the state that is going, has been allocated for use in the twenty twenty-five fiscal year.
Is it safe to assume, at least for the short term, two to three years, that you're looking at approximately about a million dollar allocation each and every year?
It's, I can tell you that it's a million dollar allocation in twenty-four, I don't know how much it will be in the twenty-five, because I haven't seen, there's a distribution formula that's included in the twenty-five allocation. I haven't worked the numbers out to see how much it's going to be of the state. It also comes with a continuity of funding requirement at the county level, right? You can't say, well, Jeff, you've got a million dollars from the state, we're going to cut your budget by a million dollars at the county and leave me even. This is supplemental funding that is, is directed at reducing case back odds in high crime, in high crime, quote-unquote, high crime communities.
Whether it can be stretched, that use for personnel?
It's, can be used for additional personnel. We have provided an outline, a budget outline to the state on how we're going to spend it, including additional personnel for attorneys, additional personnel for legal assistance, shoring up the funding for victim advocates, contracting with paralegal services to provide litigation assistance, adding an additional technology assistant, because, especially with a fourth criminal judge being added, we currently work with three criminal judges. Figure, we tried to be able to cover two out of three, now we're going to have to be able to cover three out of four, so we'll need to do another technology litigation assistant within the office. There's also money for recruitment, retention, training, included in the budget outline that we provided to the state. In answer to the other questions about is crime rising, what we're seeing is shifts kind of in some, in some of the areas in terms of violence with guns, in the perpetration of that, we're seeing this downward trend in terms of age of the kids that are involved in this. Within the city of Kalamazoo itself, we've had fewer people hit by shots this year, fewer people killed by gunfire this, fewer people killed, period. This year, in the city of Kalamazoo that we were at, at this time last year, last year was a record high. We want to be less than that. We've seen increases, but we've also seen increases in terms of the numbers of cases pending, right? It's not just the number of cases committed, it's the number of cases we're able to resolve versus the growing number of cases that are pending. When we increase the number of cases that are pending in the litigation surrounding it, we increase the need for additional attorneys, litigation assistance, legal assistance, basically, everybody in the office, it all flows downhill when there's a greater number of cases pending. And with four circuit court judges doing criminal work instead of three, we're going to need to have staff, an additional courtroom with layers, because you can't just keep spreading that out. And the reason that there's a fourth judge is that there's going to be a fourth judge assigned to criminal work. It's, it's because that's where the numbers at State Court Administrator's Office, that there is a need there in Kansas. Any other questions?
There's one, not for the prosecutor, though.
Thank you. Thank you.
This, the other one, the information for software enhancement, data sharing in the sheriff's office. I know we didn't hit the previous task, but we made a couple of allocations for ARBA funding for data sharing, didn't we? So both through strategies of data sharing through the gun violence funds, and then another ARBA request as well, that we approved from the sheriff's office. How much in total committed, and what's the gap?
So I don't know the exact gap. The sheriff has been working with other municipal public safety agencies on procuring a new RMS system for a county-wide system, but it sounds like to me that not all jurisdictions are on the same page still. So, and which would be problematic to have different systems in the county, and difficult to share, you know, that information across different platforms.
We are on different systems now.
We are on different systems now.
And are we on the timeline for the ARBA fund to extend?
So the ARBA funds that were allocated to data, so that would have been mostly gun violence, the county board actually earmarked fund balance for the sheriff's office for that technology.
And so it's a good issue.
Yeah. Great. There's only questions, I'll continue with this slide, so just kind of, you know, getting on the cumulative impact on future decision-making. So planning, again, facilitating smart growth, that's investing versus the spend mentality, and then increasing county visibility and stakeholder facilitation, which is something that we did with our strategic planning, focusing on staffing, as you know, our workforce is ever merging, and so it's constantly emerging, and so we're looking at that. We recognize that there's a lot of potential in departmental leadership changes with pending or impending retirements that are coming up. So looking at training opportunities for cross-training and then automating processes to weed out some of the mundane tasks that could be taken over by technology. And then also looking at funding CIP more appropriately so that it's stable. Obviously, in past years, that had been the case, but for the twenty twenty-four budget process, and hopefully beyond, we're able to sustain that. As you know, we have significant projects on the horizon, parking garage, admin building for maintenance. Last time I heard, when I applied for the job, was almost thirty million dollars in deferred maintenance, just in this building alone. So recognizing that, if we want to continue to serve the public effectively, we need to have facilities to support that. Obviously, the jail, like I said, they have an old part of the jail, new part of the jail, the old part of the jail has to have some attention. We also have the permanent construction of two new courtrooms to support the judge that's beginning their tenure on January first, twenty twenty-five, but also recognizing that the legislation actually originally called for two judges due to the increase in caseload here. So recognizing in the future, we need to continue to plan for the construction of two new courtrooms.
Legislation only approved for one, but the study said that we needed two.
Yeah.
But if you go through the study, almost every county in the state is down a judge at least, so we were down two, and then the legislation, which is pretty rare, it took pretty much Nesbitt and Sean McKean to get together to, because they both wanted one, to get together to get that judge each. I don't think we need to build, just my opinion, I don't think we need to build two courtrooms because we're not getting that second judge in the next twenty years. I, I, I don't see it, I don't see that happening in Lansing, us getting a second judge, because that we just got one. Almost every county in the state per that report is down at least one judge. I mean, I don't know why we have to build two courtrooms.
That's the last time we got a judge, like nineteen ninety or something.
I think our perspective from administration, to be honest, is that if you're already constructing space, especially expanding the Gold Road Justice Complex, which is a two-story building, it would make sense to at least construct the one courtroom and then leave a shell up top. The courts have indicated as well that they have need for a temporary or visiting judge capacity there. They do have cases where they call in visiting judges that are retired judges from the state that come in and assist with docket management. So just some, just something to keep on the horizon and in the back of your mind that we're already constructing and, you know, going into that sort of level of construction, at least leave a shell and room for expansion. As you know, when we constructed the Justice Center, it's already full, so kind of just keeping in mind that we definitely need space when we, when we're constructing. Household hazardous waste, I already went over, and then obviously, looking at more housing solutions, so temporary housing investments, like you talked about. I don't want to steal the vice chair's thunder, but he kept it told, he's, when I, I know when, when he came back onboard, we talked about the idea of hiring a lobbyist. A lot of these highly costly, high-cost projects do require us to have some assistance in that arena, talking to our state legislators, knowing what opportunities are coming up in state legislation, they can kind of give us that stuff. A lot of counties do utilize that kind of service, so it's something that the county board might want to consider, having someone that can fight our fight advancing and bring back state resources to the county. There are a lot of communities that, for example, we were just in Meskegan County meeting with them, they received sixty-five million dollars from the state for a, for a water sewer project they're working on, because they have a lobby. Because they have lobbyists and they pay like a great amount for lobbyists. So lobbyists do assist in that, that fight and that's something that I know vice chair talked about. So we'd say it's absolutely crazy that we don't have one. Absolutely. So something, something to think about. Outlook for twenty twenty-five. Obviously, you know, the county board's guiding priority, one of the guiding priorities was employees and focusing on employees. So looking at step increases, looking at cost of living adjustments to your wage scale. And then addressing some of the new revenue and, in, in consultation with our golden ratio policies of the alcohol tax, marijuana tax revenue, our equalization reports and state revenue sharing. So all those, we, we are seeing some increases and so we're paying special attention to revenue as we move forward. And then the last two slides is kind of focus on some of the commitments of general fund and how that is illustrated within the county audit. So as you know, the audit currently and how we've operated, we've sort of in the back of our minds have always earmarked sort of big projects. But as reflected in the audit, it just says unassigned, unallocated fund balance. But knowing that we have projects that we've allocated money to. So we're, we're going to be suggesting actually creating projects during sporty so that in the audit, it does not appear that these are unassigned and unallocated monies. Because right now it looks like we have fifty-two million dollars and we know that we have to build a downtown parking structure. We earmarked funding for a technology project in the sheriff's office. We have K L landfill funding, so things like that. So all of these are on there. I've also have reviewed sort of some conceptual things that we have out there that, you know, I would recommend that we earmark additional funding for. So household hazardous waste, we know we need to do a study and, and hire architects and conceptual designers for what a new facility will look like. We know we have deferred maintenance, so CIP funding in construction for Gold Road Justice Center, our administration building, et cetera. So things like that. So those are things that we kind of see at least for twenty twenty-five and we can continue those conversations on how that's all worked out. But kind of wanted to really relate to the public that we don't just have fifty-two million dollars that we don't know what to do with. There are major capital projects out there that encumber the funding.
The reason that it's unallocated is because it takes board action.
Right, it takes, yes.
Administrator can allocate it, finance director can allocate it. Only the board of commissioners can allocate that, those dollars. That's why it's still an option.
Absolutely.
But good question on the sheriff's office technology project. Is that what we were talking about with commissioner strategy and that, that's our work today. Okay, and then the housing issues, I know, then the, um, the K L landfill, Avenue landfill. We need to support, I mean, I'm just, to put it out there, I'm not comfortable putting that amount of money at one point five. Set that amount aside. I do believe with the administrator that we should put something set aside. But the chances of us getting hit with that lawsuit from the EPA and then reopening that or remediation of that site, if they do do that and they go with a plan that they, they, it would, there'd be way more carbon used to pump all that stuff out than to pump it out. It would be detrimental to the environment, not to mention with Bangor, Oshmo, pretty close to Bangor, city of Kalamazoo, I just politically, I don't see them hitting us with a ten million dollar bill or a hundred, whatever they're, they're talking about doing. Now, could they come back with another cap or replace or some other theory? I think they could and that's why I think it's probably safe to put money there. But one point five is like we're preparing for the worst. And I, I just, I mean, if we've got other priorities, you know, I'm, I'm just putting it out there, that, that's one of those dollar amounts that I can see if, as we move out then I might be okay with lowering that amount if we see a need somewhere else.
I agree. Yeah, I, I think the intent here is just to kind of recognize that we have liabilities out there, aid or projects. But yeah, absolutely. I mean, that, that's number that can be tapered down. Yeah, by the board, absolutely. And then kind of just going through at least twenty twenty-four commitments, what we had talked about previously for the twenty twenty-four budget process. So at the time, we had actually earmarked six million for the downtown parking structure. I had increased that for twenty twenty-five, or recommend increasing it because we know the new parking garage is going to be around sixteen million dollars. So half city, half county, twenty twenty-four CIP is something we already had done this year, so that's already moved. We still have the sheriff's office technology project on, on the radar. Recall that we purchased two parcels of two forty-seven West Kalamazoo and then four forty Church Street Employee Benefits Fund, recall that, that we had to make a, an additional contribution to that system. And then the K L landfill is still on there. Something that we will ask for board action to actually earmark these, the finance tree projects, transfer so that way the audit is reflected appropriately. In the future.
When we, from the sale of our other properties, that money already in the bank to the tune of about eight million dollars for that, the parking garage?
Yeah, so there's funding there from those facility, or from those property acquisitions and sales. Yeah, absolutely. So we have funding in the CIP program or in that, in the four oh one fund for that. But we, we, we wanted to still stay extra in there. So for, for, for example, and we don't know for sure yet, there's no contract with City Act to know that if they're going to actually go through a partnership with us. They do intend to do so, but we don't know that. So this earmarks all of the money we need to construct a parking garage to. This would gives, yeah, this gives us all of it, yes.
This is your extension.
Correct, yeah. Correct, yes.
And if the city did partner up with us, then that would be a.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's a return. Yeah, absolutely.
And then question, and I know there tends to be kind of conversations about this. The building master plan to look at the needs, you mentioned thirty million dollars to first fund the building. The building across the street, has there been any sort of thought of what it would cost?
No, we, we haven't done enough research on that, I believe that. So we know here office space wise, it's about sixty thousand square feet. Each floor of the parking structure is about thirty-two thousand square feet as, as currently, you know, raised command and design. So we believe to construct about sixty thousand, seventy thousand square feet. And knowing how, you know, this space is inefficient in its design, in terms of space, conceptually, we believe it would be around thirty to forty million to construct another three to four stories on top of our.
The exact same cost of is for maintenance, this.
Yes, correct. You put that out there. Yeah, that is correct. So then lastly, and then this won't take too long, just kind of wrapping up, showing or presenting very high-level details of the county strategic plan. And then how we intend, or even recommend that the org's guiding budget priorities align with the strategic plan of overarching concepts. And so as you know, we went through that whole process. This was something that began in December twenty twenty-three and it'll actually end here in a couple of months with a presentation to the board by Allison, Brumman and her team. So we have a draft mission statement as rewritten. So Kalamazoo County seeks to enhance the quality of life for those who live, work, play, commute, or invest in the community, in our community rather. Through a wide range of inclusive services and programs, county efforts focused on community outreach and equitable problem solving. We prioritize public health, public safety, justice, civic participation and community revitalization. So that's the mission for, these draft mission based on all of the feedback and the workshops that folks participated in for all the way through twenty twenty-nine, if, if accepted by the board. In terms of a draft vision, what Allison and her team came up with based on, on participation in discussions was by twenty twenty-nine, Kalamazoo County will be a safe, inviting and collaborative community. The organization will be an exemplary employer of choice and model, and a model of governmental excellence. The county will foster sustainable economic growth, inclusivity and community-focused services that enhance the quality of life for all. And so that's a guiding vision in, in draft form. So by the numbers, we have nine goals defining the future of the state and the county. We have twenty-five objectives that came out of all of the participation, seventy-seven specific initiatives that with data measurements that will be benchmarked. And that will be actually incorporated into the budget as another module. There's a, you all had approved the strategic planning module of part of ClearGov. And then also obviously culminating into the organization in pursuit of extraordinary, extraordinary progress. So implementation process. So we will have Allison and her team and then obviously administrators work the training departments on the, and supervisors on strategic plan implementation. We'll adopt the final plan and then prepare, obviously, the county for that data-driven performance measurement through our budget process. So then kind of just highlighting some of these goals. So looking at by twenty twenty-six, we'll have, and these are just very broad goals, right? So strategic decision-making by county leadership. Twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, we'll be looking at hopefully strengthening the public workforce as we have been doing. So continuing that. Twenty twenty-eight, focusing on equitable service delivery from county departments to vulnerable populations. And then twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine, enhancing communications infrastructure and awareness of county services. So the internal goals, twenty twenty-six, cultivating a collaborative workforce culture. Twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty, enhancing operational efficiency through design, standard operating procedures and automation. Twenty twenty-seven, enhancing leadership of the organization from all the retirements and such. And then twenty twenty-eight, fostering team dynamics. And so all of that really just emphasizing again that the goal here, I, I, I would recommend aligning some of these overarching guiding strategic plan goals with county budget priorities. And thank you for your participation, obviously, sitting through this, hoping I didn't take too much of your time. And happy to enter, engage in the rest of the discussion as you deplore budget priorities. Turn back to you, Chair.
Um, it's twenty twenty-four, eight, nine, I'm sorry, are there any questions for the membership for most minutes?
That being, I think we'll probably talk about the next topic, but it's, I'm good.
Twenty twenty-four, dash eighty-nine, request for approval, this thing here, twenty twenty-five budget.
Oh, are you looking for priorities from us? Okay, I got a few. One, I think we can develop, one of the, as far as economic development, an enticing large corporation, these large businesses move into our area. One of the biggest obstacles is site remediation. The ability for a company to move into a site that's already ready to go, it's got an infrastructure and everything lined up. There is an awful lot of money from the state. We matched it five to one and ten to one. And just huge amounts of money from the M E, M E C that can be put in of a partnership with, whether, whether it be our Brownfield, whether it be your Southwest Michigan first, whether it be our old plant. If we could put a pot of money to be used to be matched by the state for some of these projects, I'm talking like half a million dollar thing. I could get more details on it. We could turn that if we got matched to a ten to one ratio, that half a million dollars would be five million dollars on site remediation project. And then we can put stipulations on it that you have to hire like so much per hour. We're not going to be hiring twelve dollar an hour manufacturing job. We're not trying to entice home data centers. We're actually trying to get high, high-end man manufacturers that people are making living wage thirty dollars an hour plus. I think it would really behoove our community in the long run. Number two, I think that we need to look at how we do a county fair in this area and I think it's unfair that we are putting that on our parks department. I think that if we are going to try to move it from a four H to a county fair, it's going to need to take a period of a couple of years and we need to invest the personnel to do that outside of Dave's office and it would take a couple of year project. Number three, that I, I think would behoove us is looking at tri-share. And, and I know that was in our non-medical thing, but I hear from employees all the time of what a great program that was. If it's a way that we can help all of our employees, not just those that fall below the poverty line, but help all of our employees that are recruited or attraction place, I think that would be good. And then my number four priority is a distant fourth. But we are in charge of a county commission of a half a billion dollars a year through all of our different departments, through all of our different silos. I do not, and you look at other counties the same size, I don't think it is fair for sustainable to continue to ask people to spend thirty hours a week, forty hours a week to do what this job is, this county commissioner, which is pretty darn, darn close to a full-time job. What you're going to get is you're only going to get rich people and retired people that can afford to do this. So I think if we're really going to, to focus on sustainability of the long-term structure of how county government is going to operate, we're one of the big ones now. We're one of the top, you know, seven or ten counties of the state and we have a huge financial obligation each and every year. I think we need to, not just, not for ourselves, but for the sustainability and structure of county government. I think we need to compensate people that are doing that job. So those are my four.
Did I raise my hand? I, I will comment on a couple of John's suggestions. One, I completely agree with you. I, I don't spend any more time on county business than most of you, but I am retired. And I think every time I head for another township meeting or whatever, say, how the hell do people that work for a living do this? You either go, you gotta shortchange something because you don't have forty-eight hours instead of twenty-four. The other comment has to do with state of Indiana and the fact that this goes back to probably pre-COVID. They were doing some amazing things in terms of economic development because they had a process that developed, I want to say somewhere in the vicinity of fifty-four shovel-ready sites. The preliminaries were all done. If you wanted to build a new plant, you could start turning dirt thirty days. Whereas with us, it's so many townships, so many counties, so many state permits, requirements and whatever, that if you were running a, a major company looking for a new place to settle, you probably would look at a place like Indiana with fifty-some shovel-ready sites and not worry too much about Michigan. I don't know what South Michigan first might be able to counsel us on or assist with. But I like the way they're staffed now and, and most of their orientation, I like a lot. So that suggests we poke in with them when at all possible. Thank you.
I have some super questions, thank you, Chair. So with the employee benefits, when we talk about the E C fund, is that not one of them because we're looking for to be tax-free?
Correct, yeah, right.
Thank you, Chair. Not in a position to any of these suggestions. I want to think to that, that site remediation process and I think as we look at Kalamazoo County, I mean, we're, we're in a position where we, we've become very poised to grow as we have a one thirty-one exchange bill. And hopefully for very positive impacts in parts of my district in Kalamazoo Township. In particular, we have a lot of very long abandoned industrial zoning right off of where that exchange or expansion is going to, going to go. To Vice Chair's point, you know, as we think about how we advocate for the funding for site remediation, building infrastructure to set the, the stage. How does the county, I, because I don't think we have the authority to coordinate community benefits agreements. It has to be with the local units. And how do we, how do we ensure if we're going to make an investment, we've got to figure out that dialogue and get some boilerplate or some support for the municipalities to structure those agreements.
I can be honest with you and say I don't know, but I will say that I would not support it without those. So I think what happened to be a partnership of township and city, with city boardage as well, depending on where those sites are, maybe Comstock or Ashville Township. Um, uh, depending on where those sites are, maybe Comstock or Ashville Township. Um, but yes, I, 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 I would have, I would be hard pressed to use county tax fare dollars out of those kind of community that projects.
I agree with that. So just on our, our radar about how we're going to have to have that sort of intergovernmental collaboration will be needed, my understanding of, of those C V's from research in the past. I'd like to add just a, another sort of point of discussion. So, and, and I don't know, here through the budget processor, you know, I think we need some, some policy refinement. We've had a number of discussions with employees about inequity in the pay structure. And so we're going to tackle both step increases and a, and a COLA adjustment for them. And I know, you know, we went round and around and around through the wage study. But really, you know, just again thinking the last time that we heard from the nurses before us, if you could potentially hire in a new hire, but because they have experience, you could bump them up steps over people who've been here twenty-some years, that, that's not equitable, right?
It's not. Yeah, so that's not being communicated currently. One, it's from our standpoint, it is a, that is a supervisory. I would say that's the department and the supervisors duty to ensure that they're not dealing with that. If someone is there for a long period of time, that's something, and then they want to hire someone at a higher rate than someone. I mean, that's, that, that's, that can happen in, in any job. I mean, that's, and, and also I think the board is hearing from a minority of employees that are longer tenured employees that are upset with the pay scale as it was implemented. And that is inevitable in any workforce. And, and we're always, but you were, but the board has been hearing from, uh, from a minority of employees.
Agreed, and so, but I want to just drill into that a little further. I mean, if I've been a nurse in a department for fifteen years and someone is hired in brand new this week and we're making the same wage, I mean, certainly that doesn't feel equitable. Uh, I mean, there's experience and institutional knowledge and not.
Right, and, and.
It's not the same.
And from our standpoint, the department is creating the problem. They should not hire that employee in at the same pay rate as the person that's been there fifteen years. They should hire them in at the A or B staff, period. They shouldn't hire them in at the B staff.
But weren't, weren't the employees moved into a new pay band and so they were put at the low staff? Because they were in a new band?
You guys, I don't believe that was the case.
So, so there, so there's a couple of, just implementation of it, and it really is around the reset. So the issue is our folks get reset, right? So part, part of the message, or at least how folks are interpreting the shift, is my step is completely only related to my years of experience and competency. That, that is the only, that implication. The point of compensation structure, number one, is to be competitive, fair wage for the job. So for instance, if I, if I pay twenty dollars an hour for this job, it's twenty dollars for the job. You could be in that job for twenty years, it's twenty dollars an hour until they say, hey, that's not our competitive, we're going to make that job twenty-five dollars an hour. That's, that's wage for that particular job. The county structure has it, so that wage remains competitive over a series of number of years. There's no mistake in our policy that every ten years, the wages are re-studied so they can be reclassified, fucking pensions. If you're really looking to get paid for your time and longevity with the county explicitly, that is what longevity pay is by definition. So the, the power and strength of wages that are wage structure. And, and to Kevin's point, no one wage structure is a hundred, a hundred percent. There's lots of policy elements that are not present in our current one. This is an issue of eighty-two, right? In eighty percent of the cases, you have what you need, it's those, it's those twenties. There's a couple of tools, uh, with retention that we just don't have the other places to have, right? So there's lots of other aspects around it, but the, the direction of this work, well, for at least for us in terms of interpreting this, is that that A step and the way it's drawn, it means we had, at, in a slightly above. That means that's the A step. And, and so we corrected that there are some people that were historically, um, underpaid that when the wage study was implemented, you know, some people got three percent because they were largely paid competitively. There are others that got twenty-four percent because they were historically underpaid. So this was a level set and a place for us to start to make sure that every employee who's here is paid a fair competitive. Longer they stay with us, and, and, and honestly, the, the steps and how we look at it, keeps us competitive for a very long time. And that's really what it's about. And I think the last point, which is a little bit of soapbox, you can, uh, indulge me, is that if you're fed and you're full, you don't look outside of this point. So there's a little bit of a, a concern on that piece of it, which is we made sure that everyone was competitive. If you remain with the county, you are going to be paid more, right? Than a person that's coming in because they're going to be at A and B staff. The only time when that changes is when you start getting time and distance away from when that A and B was first created. Because that scale gets shifted, right? Um, that's what we do by policy, is that A and B gets shifted. So you remain, uh, competitive and, and at price points, uh, has that purchasing power with the inflation. So you do that, 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 the A and B that changes, not rooted permanently. So that, that's where, really where it comes in.
So Jen, are you, what I'm thinking, I'm hearing you saying, um, in that field where done a compensation study and I've been somewhere for twelve years, a new guy comes in or this compensation study says, based on this, we keep and use same, or we, we dumb you down a level rate and cap you out so you can't move forward, or you're capped out and you don't get anything. And then now this new person comes in and say, my job started at fifty and then, you know, I'm there and then another job that's equivalent, somebody that's coming in at seventy. And I'm like, I've been here for twelve years, is that what you're saying? Like, that actually part of?
Well, I, my understanding of what has, has happened, we had some positions, they were reclassified, they all received increases of some sort. So they got an increase, but they're now in a step A, maybe they've been here ten years and this person gets hired this week and they're making the same wage. And that ten years then isn't, uh, reflected. So I heard elevated by deputy administrator that longevity pay is then a way to recognize that. And that's something that we, you know, are not really utilizing. And so what, what would be approaches to address longevity pay? If, you know, the market studies help us create an equitable wage structure, then what do we do to compensate that institutional knowledge and help people feel that that, that is valued, recognized and, and compensated?
Vacation payout. Yep, so, so, so yeah, exactly, Vice Chair. I mean, that was one in the non-medical benefits we talked about, the vacation payout. So that's one way longevity pay, although we didn't recommend it, but it was the number one, uh, non-medical benefit requested uh, by cert, by employees in the, in the, uh, non-medical benefit survey. Uh, that can be brought back. We just have concerns that it could be eliminated like it did before and it really, uh, affected the morale of the organization. But just keep that in mind, so if we do bring it back, it's, should be put along.
But ask us a pay scale that ends up placing ten-year employee, six-month employee in the same wage also creates more issues, you know? So. Though I think, you know, recognizing the appropriate, what was the estimated cost for the, the number one requested non-medical benefit by the employees? Didn't get away with it.
No, although our request is not here. It says it's not recommended.
I'm sorry, I'm not here to, excuse me.
Yeah, it doesn't have the information, estimated cost is not there. It just says keep, uh, sustained long-term, not recommended.
I think if Vice Chair opposed any policies.
So we've, uh, there were a couple of policies previously that may changes, maybe two thousand, ten, this era. But long story short, um, that policy, I believe, I thought we had was zero for years, five to nine, having fourteen. I see with fifteen to nineteen, twenty to twenty-four, or twenty-five plus. And, um, so we have data, just for an example, um, so there's five, right? That's the length of those numbers. So you have two hundred fifty dollars, five hundred, seven hundred fifty dollars, thousand, two thousand. So if you have an employee for, uh, uh, he's the first increment, it would get two hundred fifty dollars payment. Um, you keep going up the ladder. If we, you said, it's about two hundred fifty K, is the name of the cost if you use those specific increments of two hundred fifty dollars, five hundred, seven hundred fifty, a thousand, and two thousand. Okay, obviously the board can decide, administration can recommend what those increments are, or you're just going to follow it according.
That was, to put on the thing.
And, and, and Chair, if, if I may, so if you recall, the, um, nurses that spoke at the, and actually the retired nurse indicated that the longevity pay as it was implemented and established was an insult. I mean, that was literally said on the record. So utilizing, we would, you'd be looking at an increase, uh, amount, so it would be way over two hundred fifty thousand. But instead, but implementing and establishing at that level did not appear, at least by former employees, to be appreciated in that amount because of the.
Really, really quick, I thank you for those numbers. I mean, if that's something the board wants to, to move forward on, it's certainly something, you know, look. Yeah, but I don't think that solving this problem, I think, uh, Daryl hit, hit the nail on the head. No pay scale system sort of have clean, perfect, well, how you get that? Things like rule of eighty, it's a good, good, good way to help get there. Um, paying out vacation pay and maybe looking at a lower sort of longevity sort of system that would maybe is not quite as generous as before. Something like to that nature, I think it's going to take something, it's going to, to solve that problem that you asked how you do it. Short of doing a complete whole new compensation audit for every single one of our employees and starting from scratch, I think it's going to be like a lot of little things to get us there, not one thing. That's, that's just my thoughts.
I want us to think about though, when we talk about vacation pay, there's no, you know, like Kevin probably has more days stacked than I do. Because they have, they don't have the resources or the funding to take a day off to not be there for the kids. So when we look at that, like if we really want to pull and really resolve this, if we look at that, vacation pay is not, it'll solve maybe Kevin being mad that somebody came in at his step. But when we talk about our lower, our, you know, our employees, what our lowest pay is thirty-one K-ish. When we talk about that, sometimes bring home five hundred dollars maybe every two weeks, like they're not going to have vacation days stacked to, to be able, and I can see in my role that, and I, actually I see it in my role now that when folks are coming in, they are coming in at my pay scale that are fresh out of college or just got their master's degree. And I'm sitting, I'm arguing, and that's what compensation studies do. So if we have so much money, twelve million in the pot for these people that are saying, hey, this is not fair, I've been here twelve years. And most of the time, people are coming to get in these positions and people twelve years got to train them. And, and we're not paying them to train and, and that's just a part of the job. So I guess my, my next question is, you know, if, if we look at that and we put a budget out to compensate these folks that have been here twelve years and somebody just fresh out of college with no institutional knowledge, what is that person looking for? Is that a five percent increase? I don't know what our taxes, you know, increase wise when we're looking at that. And almost entities, they won't go over that five percent within that year. Is that, you know, that next step? That they're an A, do we move that person to a B? Like, how do, how do we resolve this issue with all this money we got left?
I'll start with, if we only had twelve million, I'd say that's not enough. We've got, we've got lucky, um, but that's a different.
I'm just putting a number out there.
But the reason I was talking about vacation being somewhat of a, an equity for, uh, new employees versus older employees and the way that vacation time is given at the county is based on years of service. So if you have ten years of service, um, you get a lot more vacation days. Somebody that just got hired in, even if they're on the same A step. What we're doing with our vacation buyouts, that was one of the non-medical, uh, things that we're doing. It allows longer-term employees who have accrue, accrue more vacation days each year. That's, is it going to make up the difference now? But it's just one little, I mean, that's why I said, it's going to take a lot of little things, not one thing.
But is that, like, if Tanner worked in ten years and Kevin worked in ten years, like at my step at my job, I get twenty-two days, right? For vacation, there are some people who are not in my Z category that no matter if they're ten years or not, they're not going to get twenty-two days. So are there steps?
Oh, we don't do that at the county. It's, you get, uh, you're based on H R policy, whether you're making twenty thousand dollars a year or, you know, or thirty-one thousand dollars a year, seventy-two, I'm, Kevin's a contracted employee, and so would our corporate council would be as well. But they would fall under our regular county, uh, H R policy. So like every year of service they get, they get, you know, provided they get a so, a good enough report, hold their advisor, their, their supervisor, they get a step increase, they have a new step increases that year. And then, um, they get more vacation days each and every single year of service, correct? Like, like two or three more per year, honestly.
I think, well, so, so there's a, there's a, uh, I don't want to say, kind of a tiered system, yes, I believe it, it's at zero by five to ten.
So what's your thinking? Thirty-six thousand dollars a year, but you've been here for twenty years, you'll get like six weeks vacation. Now, now you pay out those vacation days, it's thirty-six thousand dollars a year. I agree with you, it's not going to be that much money. But they do, if you have the same position as like, you worked here for twenty years, you got, you're making thirty-six. They just hired a new janitor, let's make it thirty-six. You got five weeks of vacation, whereas they only got two weeks of vacation, so you could sell some of your vacation days. But I, I agree with what Jen's saying, that, that's just a little bit of making up the difference. It's not going to make you whole, but.
Well, so, if, if I may, if you all don't mind, um, one, one thing that we, you know, talked about, um, as we have been having, you know, engaging in conversations with employees around this perceived inequity is a lot of employees were, when we implemented the plan, the, uh, compensation study, we had frozen steps in twenty twenty-three. One thing that would, uh, probably resolve a lot of the, uh, I would say the perceived inequities and the frustrations around it would be, you can restore the staff for twenty twenty-three. So that's an option you could do for those that were to be awarded a seven twenty twenty-three is restore it. So now that newer employee that came in would not be at the same staff as.
So that's an option, uh, that we could.
I'm sorry?
Would there be potential liability if we did that?
I don't think so. In, in terms of employees that may have, uh, separated from the county unit?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, I don't think so. We can, well, well, yeah. I mean, yeah, we, we, we can touch the corporation council on that, but I don't, I don't see that people, I don't think so. So, I mean, that, that's another mechanism we could look at, uh, and we could put a cost to that as well.
Yeah.
The X step that we talked about before, is that we talked about there?
No, the X step is, uh, so that's a, that's a half step for those that are in, um, what do we call it? Like the kind of challenged, uh, yeah, basically more challenging positions that are difficult to recruit for. So, uh, we have that policy too. We don't have many employees in the X bands, but we do have that. That, that's a tool out there too for positions that are very difficult to recruit or retain. We can, you know, look at, uh, place none of the X band in too.
Yeah, uh, one thing I've never heard mentioned in terms of benefits and benefits, obviously, have a lot to do with, uh, employee satisfaction in addition to pay. Uh, it was something that came up and up, John, when I was there, and that was a long time ago. And it was summarily just, 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 and that was providing a cafeteria-style benefits program. So somebody who wanted more time off could get that. Uh, somebody that wanted to trade that time off for more money, based on whatever their circumstances were, could opt for that. And I'm sure there were many other things that would have been considered, you know, full-blown cafeteria-type arrangement. I never got to, to see what that might look like because it was, it was never done. Uh, I just heard enough about it to think, you know, it might be good. Because as I was getting into my, uh, uh, my senior years there, uh, time off was not a problem because I had six weeks vacation. I was afraid to take, uh, two weeks vacation because I'd have to get retrained when I came back. I was afraid to take two weeks vacation because I'd have to get retrained when I came back.
Cola, it's not currently in effect.
So what we normally do every year, I I know, and I I try not to call it a cola, I didn't catch that in PowerPoint, I wouldn't call that. We we, it's really, because it's not really a cola, the the cost of living, as you know, is more than what we typically adjust the scale. So it's really a. Weight scale adjustment is what we do. So we adjust the entire weight scale up by a certain percentage. This year was three percent. And then employees also, if, uh, uh, if they receive a satisfactory score on their evaluation, receive a step increase. So it really comes out to a seven percent if you, uh, increase for twenty twenty four. Is is i- if you were, uh, successful in obtaining that, or attaining that, that step increase, so.
We've got three for cola for your budget.
So right now, in the, in the numbers of that, if I answer them right now, we have scenarios, we we can include this reason, right now, just a. Just to look at all the funding requests right now, I have them programmed at a two percent. But up to, it's up to the board and how they want to proceed on that. So we can increase that based on, uh, discussions and. We have the two percent and a step increase currently planned for the twenty twenty five.
So that's. And they annually you budget.
So this, 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 so, so this is just for this budget. So it fluctuates. The weight scale adjustment has. It has been implemented anywhere from one percent to four percent. Um, and so that kind of fluctuates, and then the step increases always, it's, it's, it covers around four percent. It's usually a four percent increase, a seven increase. So see what you combine on, that's how you get that, that that number, yeah.
Would you want us, I guess, as a board, to go through with your new, uh, new funding requests and start saving us from that ten million dollar number? Or is that, is that something you just want us to kind of circulate your head a little bit, you shoot you ideas?
I I I think that, you know, so so what's helpful for us is kind of knowing those guiding priorities, so that way we can bring back. An administrator's recommended budget. So if I know what your priorities are, I can kind of look at the list and pare that down. Last year, that's what we did, and then the board said, well, I'll come, you know, this wasn't included, and then we ended up adding it. Uh, I'm willing to to, we can do that as well, and I mean, however you want to do it, but typically I put together a budget and present it to you all. Uh, you amend it based on, you know, kind of all of the discussions that we have had.
That's very well, just quickly, we can just throw it out.
Well, no, but I will do that.
I want to do that. Certainly, it'd be a better job, Dale, of going through the budget this year and making sure that we don't have thirteen million dollars carried. I I think that that's our job, sitting around this table, to make sure that we do that, be honest with ourselves. What our revenue is and what our expenditures are, and then like, look at trends. Um, for instance, I I'm looking at a lot of these, uh, uh, budget requests, or a lot of them are one time dollars. Some of them are ongoing operational costs, and some of them are one time dollars. Um, it might even like help us just to look and see what are the one time, uh, dollars and what are the operational, uh, ongoing dollars we can kind of. Put in your head. And and yeah, I completely agree that that the 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 budget, you know, should be presented by you guys. We make minor, you know, adjustments, and but the meat and potatoes of it comes from administration. Um, but I think it might help us if. Absolutely. We're so inclined to shoot you a couple of emails, so maybe this, this million dollar request could be part of a facilities master. Yeah, necessarily a part of a twenty twenty five offer.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm willing to, but yeah, we can engage in that especially.
Um, I just wanna lift up the art. Just wanted to try to learn, first off, moving further, I know state, I'll give you some funding in common compassion. Good for that program, so we did, we'll do that, um, have a recommendation before to support that program.
Absolutely, I had that, yeah, good.
There was one more budget thing, and I'm not going to be one million percent behind it, but I do think it made foreign discussion. Um, and and board says, no, I'm I'm good with it. Um, but. City of Village of Schoolcraft is putting a a water, uh, well in, and they've got. No ability to pay for it or plan for it. Um. If we were to put something together for them, I think it would be like on a matching basis, not as sort of a gift or a loan. But it looks like we've got a lot of priorities on our, on our plate. So, you know, I I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna die on the hill on that one, as I, but I did say that I would mention it.
What's your point? What's the problem?
The cost itself, their their cost is gonna be about ten billion dollars to do a whole new water treatment, uh, new water well. They've got another eight to ten.
Matched in?
Oh, no, that is.
Oh.
I thought you said what's their cost? No, it's our cost, whatever we want it to be. Uh, we match them, you know, two hundred fifty thousand dollars was matched by the state, that was matched by them. We can maybe get there, but I don't even know if this is appropriate to even have in this, this budget conversation, because I don't think I'm at that pay. And talking to school craft even, but I'm I'm just trying to throw it out, put it on everybody's radar. It is going to be, uh, issue in South County in the next three to five years.
Is this the same issue that was happening during COVID when they were coming from those?
Different, but yes, close, real close, because they were doing a sewer, now they're doing a water well as opposed to a sewer. So it's close to the same.
Do they put them in a new water field?
Yes, they need a new pump, they need a brand new water field because the other one is too close to the railroad tracks.
I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions for you.
You also see a director, if you, if you would entertain director Grover to share some information.
Sure.
Yeah, I think.
Stuff for projects, you know, there, uh, Village of Schoolcraft and a waters project with the northern part of Angel County. And there's, oh, there's discussions going on between those two projects. I don't know if you've gotten both.
That's still one, right?
No, both, there's water and sewer problems. Project. Sure, maybe.
I've only, I've had two conversations, so I'm not pretty good every.
More to that story, I got. I wanna look into that a little bit further on where that's at.
I am comfortable just tabling this.
Okay. Okay.
So out of all these budget requests, you know, they total up to ten million. Um, you know, I wanna, would love to fund everything I could, but. I guess I'm just kind of looking for where we're at, how much we wanna spend, and. Yeah, so I know what I can cut, what I can eat. So that's kind of where I'm looking, um, you guys and from administration, it's like, you know, where are our limits?
So I would say right now, when I, from what I had in finance run, so this is keeping operations status quo, but in, but increasing wages of weight scale two percent. Uh, the, uh, second thirties and. Obviously, that'd be four percent. Uh, we are looking at a surplus right now. Uh, of about one million dollars. Okay, so that's without drilling deep into revenue. So there's a lot of revenue adjustments we can still make, but just keeping in mind that this is right now, that's just what we have, we just haven't drilled that that far down to the revenue side. Um, okay, so. Uh, and we're still waiting on revenue, uh, estimates from Department of Treasury for state revenue sharing, which is increasing. Uh, so we're working off twenty twenty, the twenty twenty four estimate, uh, before it went through committee of the, uh, governor who the budget, so we know that number will increase. So our, our surplus will increase, uh, but it it definitely won't be ten billion dollars, yeah.
Just wanted to clarify something for the others. Did you say with that was a two percent plus a step or three percent?
Two percent. Right now, this is what we have planned in 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 terms of our, uh, revenue center, uh, summary.
So two percent step.
So so two percent weight scale adjustment and then a step increase. So it's a total of six percent.
Total of six, because the step increase is four percent.
The step increase is four percent, correct, yeah.
What's a wage scale adjustment of three percent cost?
Weight cost, yeah. I believe. Where do you have it?
So they're talking about on that, obviously. Talked of this in last quarter, you were the financial statement presentation. Um, but long story short, we have two methodology that we had worked with, uh, Gigi's, um, consultants that referenced earlier. Just utilize the salary schedule. So it, there was a lot of time that we had to quickly assemble to put that together. So we do not have scenarios, so I can at this point say from a two percent to a three percent, that one percent increase equates to an X amount of dollars. People have that right now.
Like say, or would it be fair to say that since we spent about forty five point eight roughly, fifty two million, forty five point eight? I know which ones you're looking at here, or not on it, on, um, salaries, fringes, at a point would be one percent of that of four hundred fifty thousand, or is that too simplistic?
Without running those numbers, I should I self accomplish, right, I don't know. Speaking of the, the change in methodologies, that was such a significant change in terms of. Previous methodology versus. Five.
I mean, I I'm safe to say in public that one percent is somewhere in the neighborhood, three hundred to three hundred thousand dollars, plus you add on the one percent for the, uh. The, um, the fringe benefits. So you're looking at the neighborhood each point being roughly a little bit over four hundred grand. But I am, those numbers are not exact, I just going off of.
Yeah, so 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 finance will work on that, and we'll have, we'll have scenarios, uh, prepared for two, three, and four percent. Increase to the weight scale.
Like, what do we have at God, Ralph? We have three, three and a half for Ralph. We were at. We're at four and a half percent. Well, you did four and a half, you have half, four and a half percent. Every half, so we do have scenarios on it, every half of that. And and every, yeah, every half percent increase is two hundred fifty three thousand, oh, to revenue, so, yeah.
So are we looking for this lobbyist to be in this budget?
That's, I mean, that's at the discretion of the board, um.
Then when we do it, if we're saying. How much money he brings in, I think we need to have a plan, like, what are we sending them out there for? I don't even know how to hire lobbyists, um, and then, except we're saving money for our projects. What are we projecting to do with the money that we save? Because that's the, that's the idea, right? To get the lobbyists to pay for stuff.
So, so usually, yeah, what she would do is that we would be leveraging a lobbyist to bring in X amount of county dollars. We would be matching, but I mean, there's always, usually the state program, there's always matching funds that we need to have. So that funding that we still have today. But what we'd be doing is maximizing our, our capacity, yeah, leveraging that, because, so if we had five hundred thousand dollars, but. It's ma, you know, that's our matching for, you know, maybe a five to ten million dollar grant. It it helps, you know, build that extra budget capacity to complete a project.
In this way, I'll want to use to, uh, for instance, that MS four that we're doing through the drain commissioner, um, office of buildings, however, we're putting it. Um, that, that is an unfunded mandate by the state, and from what I'm hearing is from the governor's office and others is that. They're probably going to do a similar program that, that that's going to, basically the sneaky deal is gonna get the, get the worm. Um, where if you're complaining about that unfunded mandate, the, uh, portion of that, that the cost of those, those salaries would be reversed to us. But if we have nobody in Lansing fighting for us, at least the multi-client lobbyists, then we're not gonna get, uh, anybody's agenda. We're not gonna be in front of any of the chief's staffs or any of the, this legislator or the senators. And we're just, we're just not gonna get written into any of the appropriations. That's kind of how it works. Stinks, but that's how it works.
Mission, so she's for counties, though.
They have eighty three, yeah, they are lobbyists for eighty three counties, but that's like, it's, they're not a. I mean, they fight big picture stuff like revenue sharing, but specific things that are specific to an individual county, they're not gonna, they're not gonna fight.
The bulk of their county service, I mean, the rural.
Me, that, Mr. Reo, the question, I'm gonna.
Thank you, yes, yes.
Well, sorry, so. Million dollars in every question, Dale. Yeah, and and this happens every year. Last year was ten and a half million, and we were able to to satisfy, I think, two and a half million dollars of it. I mean, at at the end of the day, as administrator, I will recommend a budget and tell you what I believe should be funded. And then the board is more than welcome to, uh, tear that apart and add or delete or do whatever they like. But I I don't think that this, this session, the board should be picking and choosing what new budget requests to. I mean, that's, that's why you, it's why you have us, so, uh, we'll, we'll present a regulated budget.
To, to help orient us a little bit, I mean, last time, we we talked through some. You know, budget, um. Some items people would like to see considered as individual items, but for overall overarching priorities, like last time. We identified community safety as a priority. What, can you? Can you tell us what were the priorities that we needed?
Yeah, that's what I was actually looking at, because, yeah, I was, I was looking at it last year. Yeah, if you just give me one moment, I'll, I'll have it.
So, I mean, I, one of the things that I'll, I'll lift up as administrators looking for that. We're looking through the implementation of the strategic plan and. You know, out in twenty twenty eight is that build on focus of equitable service delivery from county departments, and that's because. Need the people and the sort of framework in place, but, you know, again, I just. Lifting up equity, equity and how those services connect to people we need within the community. Across all of the different, um, sectors, you know, from urban to rural community members. Um, what are we doing to advance, uh, equitable access, equitable service? So in general. I I just wanna lift that up, it's sort of like. Down the line of it in our strategic development, but I don't wanna keep it as a budget, frankly.
So these were up on the screen, were the overarching, uh, priorities for the twenty twenty four budget. So DEI budget responsibility was the overarching goal or priority, and then we had some sub-priorities of employees. So looking at IT infrastructure and then building a lot of, uh, open roles that, you know, the twenty twenty four budget had, I think we. Uh, before we had, uh, approved twenty six or twenty three, yeah, a lot of positions, over twenty, yeah, over twenty positions. And then community focusing on communities, so health and safety, so that's where, yeah, we're to reference. So those were the, the, the themes of the, the twenty twenty four budget process. And then we then went back and aligned a lot of the new funding requests to these priorities, yeah.
I think, um, I just wanna elevate around, uh, community safety again, and I think we've just seen a number of. You know, and and nationally, we're seeing just more and more violent weather, and I do have, um, strong concerns about that locally. Um, and I think that. We have to be mindful of that. You know, some said, I'm wanting to have to say, but it's, it's going to escalate. And so what are we doing there to be really prepared, not even just to respond to anybody, but what are we doing? Thinking about our infrastructure, our water systems, uh, the drain commissioner's office, what are we doing to have a plan? Uh, because it will get, it's gonna get dicey. And the later we begin to try to invest in those needs, the further we'll be behind the law.
Talking about long term, uh, disaster preparation.
Sure.
I think we should all, uh, take this list of requested projects and apply our skills, uh, with Amplifund to. Well, sorry.
Through what you're saying, for preparation for versus. I don't know how much we can do. But we just saw what happened to. I'm gonna say, it wasn't minimal, but it wasn't extensive. We had one that came right down the street right behind us. Over here, a few years, several years back, and it was quite devastating, killed five people and injured, uh, people. Had straight line wounds on two occasions through the county, uh, oil spill. When they, we had one through Augusta, Hillsborough area. That, uh, quite a long time ago, but I I appreciate your. Keeping that on your radar, and I think. Keeping that on your radar, and I think we need to be a little more proactive, where people are concerned about. Being notified about these like sirens, are they, well, we got new technology, comes across on yourself. Guess what, didn't happen, not everybody got that text, that tornado was going through there, the sirens warned a lot of people. Because you don't always have those things in your back pocket, and you. So there is some concern as to how do we notify? A mass of people, obviously, you don't need to put a siren down in your cow pasture, cows. They're not going to listen to it anyway, but uh, you know, where you have large quantities of people, especially in recreational areas. I think it's important that we try to. Minimize any potential help help damage, obviously, the people that work on this, uh, colleagues here that are on fire, police, uh. Uh, we strive every day to try to notify people and keep them safe, but help uh. Get a lot of things, I appreciate John bringing up uh a pair and how uh we can take some of that off Mr. Aggris, he does a great job with. The parks and making that financially uh able to function here, we have some great shows. Help with our tourism, uh, which we just kicked off, a a new thing, discovered Calum Zoo uh last week, and I think. It goes to show the the things that we have here in this kind of the universities, colleges. Uh, we've got the the promise of Calum Zoo, our golf courses, our entertainment centers, the park, and the Gilmore Car Museum. This place is a great place, and how do we improve it, and uh. Working on a lot of big, big ticket items, the parking structure, the new structure down here for the. The other side of the justice facility. Uh, we've got a lot of the policies here, and we've got the waste handling that. We're on a real big time crunch on that, because the state has stepped up and said, hey, you got a hundred and eighty days, and that clock is already ticking. So we need to get those folks seated and um working to uh take care of the. And then Kim brought up, but he has the also passes this race. You can find a home for, I do hope that that is more adequate to handle the continuing increase of. Products that uh seem to have now that are hazardous, so. I rambled out a little bit, I'm thanking you.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a couple of other things to go to, um, have a housing department. The board chief. When you want to talk about the housing.
And the director of all, may, um, check the other channel too, so we just wanted to bring forward uh this new, for a new funding request for fiscal year twenty-five, um. Uh, so this would be, I don't mind it maybe be more closer to the medical benefit, but. This is the program with KNHS, the health millage supporting as far as providing match funds. It's an employer, it's just pro, wait, I'm getting your name wrong, employer. This is probably, thank you, a floor, this is helping, um, the city of uh Portage, city of Calum Zoo, I signed up to be uh some of the pilot program of. Pilot employers for that program, uh, basically, they're providing opportunity, there's two options. One is for down payment, the year you're employed, the other option is for critical homeworkers. Um, but basically, um, they're they're paying money towards that, their employers can um go through KNHS, uh. Participate in this program and qualify, and then the um the county would have matching dollars. Um, from the village to help them get a little bit farther along, um, i- in 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 that endeavor. Um, we were looking at different options, so first year would be fifty thousand. Um, is what you have to put forward as the new employee uh benefit for them, that employees come forward to benefit that program, let's say to the down payment assistance. Um, that would be an employee could benefit for up to twenty thousand dollars, so that would be their down payment. Uh, we could put rules around that, if you wanted to have rules around that, as far as how many years they need to stay employed with the county. Um, and with the matching funds, you know, we think that that would help about twenty-five and thirty, um, obtained uh first time homeownership. I'm sure there's part of this that I maybe did a scan on as well as Mary said, so I'll let her maybe clarify or speak to the full of more eloquently than I did. Uh, just real fast about the potential new funding request that I suggested, so.
Sure, the point has to be at a hundred and twenty percent of the world AMI, about eighty percent of our employees qualify for that, so a whole lot of them do. So the twenty thousand dollar down payment assistance would be forgivable, so they'd have to work for the county for however many years that you stated. And then if they needed to repair a roof, windows, doors, whatever, it would be a low cost loan that they would repay banks and KNHS. And so it would kind of keep the revolving fund going, so you already approved through the village, um. First year a hundred and fifty grand, year two, three hundred thousand, and year three, six hundred thousand, so the city comes through, the city of Portage have signed up with matching funds. But because I'm selfish and I like the county, and we signed up, and it's first come, first served, once the ones are gone, they're gone. So I think it is a great way, and some of our lower wage employees, if you don't have down payment assistance, you have to pay private mortgage insurance. And it just is a way to eat poor people poor, and we don't want that, we want our employees to grow well, and so I'm just putting a plug for this.
Thank you. Quick question, so the. So they're asking us to put in year one, did drop two, and bring himself the additions to what we've already put in.
And the housing village will match that, yeah, and you already approved the housing village, so if you don't put in anything, well, that's a problem. But if you put in anything, then your money's civil, and we know what our employees make, obviously, I don't know what their families make. But personnel gave me how many of our employees fall below a hundred and twenty percent, and it's um quite beautiful.
Thank you.
But we're doubling our general fund money with our village money, right?
Okay, um, quick question, um, if we're giving out twenty thousand dollar, uh, up to twenty thousand dollar assistance. And we're putting in a fifty grand that will be matched to a hundred, how do we help twenty-five people with that?
Well, you know, some of them might need um a different amount, so if you don't need twenty grand, we're not going to give you twenty grand, right? So it'll move, you stay some time, your housing needs.
It would have to average it. The average would be four, if you had twenty-five people, you had a hundred grand to do it, you'd average four thousand dollars per.
Right, so you don't first come, first served, right, so every time a horse was born, it would be less, or you can put in more, you can do a hundred grand first year, and then it would be two hundred. So I thought maybe kind of low, but basically, kind of this conversation right now, maybe it needs to be a little bit higher, because then, you don't want to go to match that too.
This was, you know, in the allocations, I mean, for the housing village, this is one of the. Two of the projects that really focus on building home ownership in the community, and I think there was all was fifteen employers. Uh, through the allocation cycle that we awarded through the housing village, and I think, I mean. We would sorely do this an opportunity for recruitment and retention, if we don't have on board to be one of the participating. Employers for this, and I think this is, you know, it's money well spent, it builds wealth stability for our employees and then economic. Stability and growth for the community, so I would like to see us allocate a hundred um in year one. Um, maximize it as much as possible.
I don't think it makes sense about hundred.
Who's the booster for KNHS, and they'll give you a report back, and not the employee's name or anything else, because it's confidential, but you know what? Just uh raw data, right, without, without the name, just so you know, because we want a report back on it as well.
Yeah, and to that point, that's why I think, I think fifty thousand is probably sufficient, if we look at the numbers. That KNHS is reporting for people, utilizing down payment assistance program, the numbers are low, people, it's not like. Thirty people are buying a house per year, right, that are utilizing that program, and just because, like, our requirement is a hundred and twenty percent and below. Does that match their criteria as well, or do you have to be eighty percent below for to access the down payment assistance? And then we could also get close to that twenty-five number, because the option two is for home repair, so it's not like everybody's going to get twenty thousand dollars without payment assistance. Some people might get two thousand for a roof, and we could still achieve that number if we put in fifty thousand. So I think it's efficient, so we get a report, and then we look at, do we need to put more in, or is fifty thousand sufficient?
Well, the director of all, well, they are going through the KNHS program with, um, housing education and. Are they being matched with a a mortgage company, or is that something that?
Um, they could or they can already bring their own.
I don't know, I just. You said reported.
Do they have anything else to move for for that? Man, it sounds like you're.
Yeah, yes, oh, I, oh, I do, yes, so, yeah. Yeah, so, so I'd like to review what I at least heard, and then would like the board to actually officially make a motion to vote on the guiding priorities. So that way, there's no um, uh, confusion moving forward as we go through the process. What I've heard is this, so I've heard economic development initiatives, and I have the, some of the things that were talked about. Then that kind of aligns back to our strategic decision-making by county leadership, that's what I tied it to in the county draft strategic plan. So the guiding priority for, one guiding priority for the budget would be economic development, since I heard community safety, so I aligned that as well with strategic decision-making. And I heard violent weather, uh, like emergency sustainability, climate change, uh, long-term disaster solutions, so I have that up there. So community safety being the second um guiding priority. I also heard competitive uh compensation and benefits for employees and or prospective employees, so that ties to strengthening. The public workforce and cultivating a collaborative work culture, so that's what I tied it to in the draft strategic plan, just for an example, obviously, the KN, KN, KNHS program. Um, and we can drill down on and around that later on, and obviously, uh, the the. Wage scale adjustments, staff increases, things like that, then the last one I heard was an overarching kind of theme of community equity. Uh, and that aligns with equitable service to delivery from uh county departments for vulnerable populations, so. Think of the program like our X kids that would tie into our ACS uh department and others that we talked about too, so. The four things I heard was community development initiatives, community safety, competitive compensation of benefits for employees, community equity. If that does not sound right, then there should be a decision about this, like we have our guiding principles. Move forward.
I heard, um, competitive competition for employees and that shit, I don't feel like that.
Oh, I'm, yeah, yes, I know, yes, that, that's, I have that bullet point in there, yes, it's, yes, apology, yeah, yes.
In your, it's the last moment, you like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be great, yeah, please.
Turn it back, it's not shared, just to check to the housing.
Yeah.
Um, so what is needed from us, I mean, we talked through a couple of amounts. Um, we have a consensus on sort of what. What is needed, one thing I want to lift up, you know, if fifty, if we allocate a hundred and fifty is all that's needed, it doesn't mean that we can't reallocate. The funds, but if we don't allocate enough and it's spent, then it's delaying for us to deliberate debate and move through the agenda process before more can be allocated.
Well, I can also just say, we don't have to get the ballot most, but.
Okay.
Yeah, so so we'll probably do, just so you, just, just the way I operate, we'll probably program it in a hundred thousand, and through the budget process, we'll, we'll be able to drill that table down, so.
Thank you.
All right, well, let me. Enter a feedback on this, where you have this, and yet, worksheet that was passed out.
Thanks, all right, I'm annoyed we talked too much today. Um, one, uh, the reinstated longevity pay, um, I would like to see a table on on that, and it does, maybe, maybe just two options. If we did it like fifty percent of what we did before, because I know, I I remember when we were going through the budget coming times. We were negotiating with every labor union, trying to get rid of the longevity pay, but that was back when. Counties were a different, different shape than they are, but um, but, yeah, I, I would like to, but I do see that as. One of the several pieces that addresses what you were were talking about, uh, mission straps, but I don't think there's one solid. Uh, thing, you know, other than reinstating, um, staff increases for ten hours. I don't know if I'm a hundred percent on board with that, but I certainly would be entertaining discussion on that. Um, going through this, um, when they say no costs, it's just important, all that department heads aren't going to tell you that. Um, they're going to have people that call out of work, and they're going to say, how, somebody else is going to have to take. So the more vacation and the more time off we give to employees, which I think is important, we do have to, there is a, there's a hidden cost. It's not, it's not an actual dollar cost, but it's a, it's sort of a hidden cost. Um, the cash out annual leave, I'm good with, rule implement eighty implementation, I get, please get on that as quickly as possible, I hear that's going to have a long-term effect. To the county in a much positive um uh direction. Um, the pay for recent leave, um, I'm not okay with forty hours of pay for even leaving your at, that's too much. Uh, that's a full week of vacation, um, and you have no carryover from year to year, you're going to have some people that are really used that as an extra year of vacation. There's, you know, eight grandmother or your cousin or something, I mean, there's no way to check on that, it could really. We, we don't, we don't, days, whatever industry standard is, if you get ourselves in trouble, um. Then, uh, all of that, and then the childcare financial support for all employees, I know you don't have a table on that, but I would like to see, I mean, that's. From all the things that I've gotten from the employees, compliments I've gotten from employees, that has been the best. Number one that I've gotten, I mean, everybody seems to like that program, oh, I did, I couldn't qualify, I mean, just a little bit too much to qualify for it, but, you know. Somebody I work with, uh, something like that, so I I think that could be a good, um, medical, but other than that, I think you, uh, and then tuition reimbursement, um. I do, I'm more of a fan for the attraction of employees to to use that or be able to use that tuition reimbursement to pay, um. Student loans or a portion of it, or a small portion of it for student loans, because I think that attracts a lot of good quality employees that are. Especially in today's age, people out of college who graduated with a hundred thousand dollars, being thousand dollars in debt, it's insane. Um, it it, and if we can offset a little bit that, I I think it helps us get to that employer of choice uh portion. Um, everything else on there, um, I'm good with, uh, until the treatments, I think I asked the question, it was only like four or five employees, and it was like a hundred and twenty-one grand. That's a little board, I'm not going to make a big statement out of it, but it does seem very expensive, that's only going to help four or five employees, but I'm, I'm assisted with white man.
I'll say, John.
I'm ready to finish my privilege, but I say, I just want to say that it is a benefit, it costs a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars and helps for employees, that has to be said as well. That's it.
So we do, uh, if if you will mind, uh, we do actually have some information on the rule eighty, but, uh. My, I had to bring it up, but we do have the information, we can bring that back to ensure that to the board, so, um. The the real consideration for rule eighty, um, is not that we can't afford it, we can certainly afford it. The the uh real implication is going to be on uh the workforce and losing all institutional knowledge, so that's, that that'll be the real. Uh, complication with it, but I think that we can do it, uh, it's just more, exactly, yeah, so I I think that we can do it, and it's just a matter of. You know, attracting the right candidates back to to build gas, so, yeah.
I I'm good with this too, and I, um, agree with John, the P N F M L, I think should be twelve weeks, um. I think that, especially when it comes to like, uh, parental leave, that's important, um. I'm okay with the forty hours of frequent leave, um, and finding that, um, I kind of, e- every, uh, you can't put a price on my loved one, um. And if you have the advantage of it, um, yeah, I'm good with that.
I don't know how many are affected by this PR of the frozen safely, fifty to seventy-five percent, I think that's extremely generous. Places I've worked, it's always fifty percent, we're talking over a million dollars, so.
I don't really like that one, and, um, I mean, the tuition reimbursement, if you reimburse their loans, there's gotta be some caveat. Somebody, we hire them, is, and we give them five thousand for their loans and they leave somewhere in the week, there's gotta be some, uh. Some way back, because when they're, when they're tuition reimbursed, but they're working here and going to school at the same time, so you don't want to. You don't wanna help with their loans and then they leave, but I see, that's probably see that for. I'll have to double check this just on that, but I do believe that the provision to pay off student loans. Sounds as if you're twenty twenty-five, so that may be something, and I'll double check, definitely double check that. Uh, I just want you to be aware of that as you move forward.
I agree that we need to pass on stuff in place and base it on like an apprenticeship program, so. Most of the time in apprenticeship programs, even though you're working for the company and go, go on to school once you graduate, you have to. Um, commit to three to five years, um. And then if they don't, you know, you gotta think about how do you recruit those funds back, is it a breach contract or. They get fired, you know, is it solved if they have to do that, and then, um. To which, and you know, keep it in place that if we're gonna reimburse it, it has to be a passing break. So they need to bring, bring their transcripts in, that needs to be reviewed, they need, you know. Um, at least for the class that we're paying for, I'm not gonna worry about if. The GPA is whatever, but, you know, if they don't get N C or better, technically wherever you are, E passes, but. Uh, you know, whoever, how are we determining that, I think that those parameters. Need to be in place just so people are not going to school to go to school, and, you know, having some financial literacy. And having them take that course around that, if they, if we're doing tuition reimbursement. I don't wanna get in people's business on why they're taking our loans, so we need to draw a line in the sand that is it. Reimbursement, because when, are we talking about previous loans, and if we're talking about previous loans. You'll have people saying that's an equity issue that I don't take out a loan that's helped me with X, Y, and Z. So I think we really need to, when we draft this, we need to be intentional on how we will forward it along, so we don't get in trouble, you know. In, in a financial pit with this and then we say, no, we're not doing a program and it really hurts folks that. Really need that nursing degree so we can stack them up, you know, at the county health center or whatever, so, um, I think that was. Oh, and bereavement. It's an equities of bereavement, you know, I think I mentioned this in the, in the last meeting, sometimes it takes that week. And I know, and. And, and I look at race with this and white culture, in three days, y'all got your stuff done and y'all at Langley. And black culture don't necessarily work like that, like that, um. Families typically come up and, and that turnaround time, I, I've seen folks take a month, severe loved ones. Just because of financial status or whatever, um, especially when, and you could determine this, I know I saw, um. Uh, Friday, which supposedly they have a policy, one of their, uh. Persons were in there and they were changing how they do bereavement and a week. You don't know if people have traveled, I think we should, if we're looking at forty. And I'm not gonna say who raised who or what, but like that immediate family, and I don't wanna get into who raised you. A, a week for bereavement, when we talk about mental health and, and all those things. A week is still not enough time to deal for someone that you love, so I think a week, you process in the first two days, you really can't get nothing done, you still looking for insurance and. Did they have X, Y, and Z, you have to plan the funeral, I mean, a funeral, I went to a funeral last week and I was in there for six hours, so. I don't know, he was what, yeah, six hours. It was nine and we got hurt about three, like, in black culture, so.
Come in, you're dealing from ten.
Fifty-nine hundred records, you were just like, let's go.
I'm just saying, this is so long, funeral. Yeah, it was, but it happened, and it's happening, so I think a week is not much to ask for, for a loved one.
I'm not gonna die on that hill.
Not me either, but I'm just.
Okay, so. So I, I agree with John, from most of what, uh, Fisher said, um, I'd also like to see a, the table for the longevity pay. Um, and then as far as like the second priority, pay F M L A, where it talks about medical and. The parental leave, like what are we looking at as far as medical, are we paying people eight weeks to go get a.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, so what I wanted to do actually was kind of reorient you all to, so what you all are seeing is. What was actually presented on the survey, but by language, it's not necessarily the recommendation, so the recommendation for that parental leave is just that. Parental leave, employees ask for medical leave with that, but that would be for something like what you just explained, uh. As an example, something like that, but where does the, uh, benefits, uh, design committee recommend parental leave? And then obviously the board would decide how many weeks that would be, we recommended eight, but I think we are in discussion leaning more towards twelve weeks, so. Uh, that's something that we can present back in policy.
I'll support the parental leave for twelve weeks, um. And then for the third priority, cash out annual leave, once per year, there's an asterisk by the guest, and says changes were made to the original recommendation. Can you speak to what the changes were, was it two forty and now it's three twenty?
Yes, you're saying that, that was for the payout?
There's a lot of employees with over three hundred and twenty hours of annual leave to cash out those eight hours.
Yeah, so that was based solely, solely on the fact that, so right now in, in policy, we pay out employees that separate from county government, um. You know, that they, you know, give it to me, so it's things like that, we pay them up to two hundred and forty hours. The idea that, uh, newer employees come in and they're not occurring all their time, we didn't want them to cash out, they have eighty hours. Then they're cashing out their eighty hours and now they have to take a month or some sort of leave then, uh, that happens, now they don't have time to take off because they cashed out. So we, uh, recommend, you know, obviously by policy, uh, establishing that, that, that sort of. Uh, criteria that you must have at least three hundred and twenty hours to cash out, uh, the whole year.
How long do you have to be on the job to be like, three hundred and twenty hours, three years?
Yeah, years, yeah, something like that, yeah. Yep.
I think that's kind of where the equity comes from, because I feel like I'm down for this too, as it relates to. Uh, like P T O, because I work from home, like for next week, so. I can run to a doctor's room and, and I have to take time off, because my stuff is flexible, right, so that's. The whole equity is, so I don't, I don't know how I really feel about that one, I'm okay with folks cashing out. Eighty hours once given, three hundred and twenty, I don't know, I also feel like giving people a lot of this. So, yeah, whatever, I'm not gonna die on that hill.
Three hundred and twenty thou, twenty hours annual leave. It's basically, and you get your supervisor's permission, you just don't show up for two months? Right, yeah, but, but, but a supervisor shouldn't do that. But, and, and it really, uh, uh, operationally, they shouldn't be able to sustain that either. Yeah. Um, they would wanna hire, um, and, and I don't believe, by policy, I don't even think you, you, yeah, it's up to three weeks. That's right, you know. The follow-up, I'm sure, to Liz, uh, comment, but, and I, I gotta make sure this is correct, uh, the one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand that we be paying. You take that off of our liabilities, I heard. Correct, and. So it's like, you just take it, we owe it anyway, I think we're just paying it now and delaying later. Yeah, because of the wage, and, and so what we presented, so we presented, you have the one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, the seventy-five percent payout, which is not what. The benefits plan design committee is recommending, that would have been one point six seven million, we're recommending the fifty percent payout, so. Got you, just ease the transition. Correct.
Um. Yeah, one second. Um, as far as like the bereavement thing, I agree with, uh, my share, that forty hours is a lot of time, especially considering how it is. It sounds like the counties will be, so you can take the best, so, or some of this other stuff, this is a lot of stuff, um. Question, the childcare, add childcare financial support for all employees, what would that cost, there's not a specific cost.
We, we don't know what our county exposure is on that, we would have to, I, I mean, we don't know. I mean, we know necessarily what employees have dependents, but we don't, I mean, we don't know what the exposure will be on that, quite honestly, yeah.
Thank you, um. Perhaps that has to be drawn from the employees with, uh, the dependent savings accounts or, um. You know what I'm talking about, that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They just throw in their taxes.
Yeah.
Um, where they're saving for childcare expenses, because some have kids that are old enough that don't need, uh, paid childcare. So I just, you know, I'm not gonna die on this hill either, but, uh, back to the, the family medical leave, um. Twelve weeks for parents is what they need, I just, you know, I want us to consider and ask, I want to ask the detail. Do employees have a short-term disability benefit that, you know, because a, a medical leave, I mean, we can make a. Sort of, you know. How we feel about what type of medical procedure a person may or may not need, but it's up to them and their doctor, if they feel like they need it, and you know, if you have a. Open heart surgery, I mean, that's eight weeks that you need to recover, um, and then you, you gotta be back to work, a doctor's gotta write the note. Uh, for the medical leave, it's not just to say you're taking, you know, um. How long until long, short-term disability kicks in for employees?
So I believe it's, uh, I don't know, but, yeah, we, I have to get back to you on that, I might be able to find it though.
One of the things maybe we wanna consider is allowing for paid medical leave to the point that their short-term disability kicks in for them. Um, that then helps meet their wage or at least a portion of their wage while they remain on. Uh, off on medical issues, um, sometimes it's, that's a couple of weeks with people. Um, so it might be something to weigh out or consider.
So you reply for F M L A, so kind of to clear your job, but then you're P T O and then we kick in after you, you know, at like sixty percent.
Yeah, unless we offer them medical.
So is three weeks before a short-term case?
So definitely twelve weeks for parental leave, maybe we could consider three weeks of paid medical leave until they can reach their. Uh, short-term disability benefit. I mean, that's, that's what they're doing now.
Yeah, but if they run out of P T O, they don't get paid.
Right.
So you're saying, once they run out of P T O, keep that gap coverage until short-term comes in? Why, or are you talking about the short-term coverage as opposed to P T O?
Uh, I was proposing covering the gap from the leave to the beginning of the short-term disability, but I would be also. In policy, only for employees without P T O. I mean, that's better than nothing.
I feel, I think I'd do that, I, I don't think we'd use that very often, probably, ever.
Yeah, I mean, a medical reason.
Yeah, that's why. Oh, okay, so, so clarification, if I may, Chair, on the short-term, I'm just gonna read this for me, and it's easier. So our current policy, uh, in, in the actual plan provisions of the short-term disability, it says that after an employee has been disabled. For the plan provisions, which twenty-one days, calendar days, for an illness, injury, or day one for an accident. Short-term disability would affect, it says that employees prior sick leave must be, or sick leave balance must be exhausted before. The commencement of disability payments, an employee may opt to use P M L accumulated compensatory time or annual leave to continue one hundred percent of pay. Before the disbill, before the disability payment begins. Leave time cannot be used to supplement disability payments, the short-term disability plan. Provides up to six percent of the increase for regular gross pay, so you must, sixty, I'm sorry, say. Six zero, yes. You know, so, so yeah, the plan provisions, you know, so that, that, that kind of guides it, but, um, yeah, it does require. That you use your, your balance, your leave balance as P M L and. So, yeah, it says sick leave, um, oh, I, I apologize, yes, yeah, sorry, disregard what I said, yes.
Any more questions? Anything else you need from us?
I believe that is it, that's it. Well, I'm gonna way back to this, uh, cheat sheet here. I noticed one little line under the Board of Commission, creation of an administrative coordinator. Yes, same with that, yeah, so the board had asked for a more administrative support that was raised, actually, in my evaluation, if you recall. Uh, that board wanted more administrative report, uh, administrative support. Uh, so administrative coordinator designated for board operations, uh, all of the advisory bodies, that they would be tasked with those, those sort of, uh, tasks. Yeah. My go-to. Yeah, so that way. Yeah, I will. Yeah, just like, yeah, it's, Lily's an expensive administrator to the board, yes. We would rather, and she's sort of, she's very effective, yes. Thank, absolutely, I'm absolutely with.
Alright, we'll call objection.